I may have your attention, we'll get this meeting started. Welcome to a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceville. Be held today, March 13th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Here at City Hall, 218 South Ave., Pierceville. We have a roll call, this time.
Mary Moore. Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Teddy Neeson.
Here.
Aurora Garcia.
Here.
Brenda Termini. Robert Bideroff.
Here.
Ben Briscoe.
Here.
Chris Follett.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed. This time, Mr. Richard, will you give us an invitation?
Father God, we come before you to oversee the work in this community. We thank you for the wonderful work that has been done and the many blessings that you have bestowed upon this city. And we ask that you continue to bless our city, our local government, our council members, our city staff. Lead and guide them and direct them as they go about their daily chores. I pray that everything tonight that is spoken about will be acceptable in your sight. We thank you, Father. I would like to lift up Mayor Moore. In our prayers, as she continues to heal, wrap your loving arms around her and guide her through the healing process. All these things we pray through Jesus, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Amen. The pledge alleges-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. If you haven't done so already, please mute your phones at this time. Appreciate that. Do we have any citizens to be heard?
No.
Item five is a presentation by City Manager Charles Jackson.
Council members, I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. David Harris. He is the City Manager for the City of Alhama Heights in San Antonio, Southern City of San Antonio. And he is the current President of the Texas City Management Association. He does the same thing as you.
It's not often where I get to go and visit another city in the City Council meeting. You can stand before leaders of the community and what have you, but this is a special occasion, whether you realize it or not. So if you mention certain cities around the state, Lancaster, Plano, Richardson, Highland, Cedar Park, Sugar Land, El Paso, you can add Harris all of that list. What y'all are announcing tonight is the Texas City Management Association is proud to announce that the City of Pierceville is the City Council Year 2018.
Is this April 1st? Or is there something we're missing here?
It must be.
To just give everybody an idea of what this is about, Mayor Briscoe, is that it is a highly selective process. Many cities who throw their aim in the hat with this award, you had some competition, some strong competition. But it's because y'all's commitment to professionalize your city management, as well as work together as a team, focus on having an ethical, providing ethical and responsible leadership, that is what you're receiving the award for. And you should be applauded for that. To give you an idea of how prestigious this is, you are being invited to attend the Texas City Management Annual Conference, June 21th through 24th, Moody Gardens, Galveston, Texas, to formally receive the award. But also, at the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference, this following forward, your city will be honored with a special session to tell the world about how wonderful, wonderful things y'all have done. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well done.
So, to go to start the process tonight, not finish the process, to start the process. For those that are in attendance, we have some plaques to recognize this. The first one I grabbed, this Councilman Ben Briscoe, some of them are going to come down. Then these, the plaques read, "City Manager, City Employees, and Citizens of the City of Pierceville, Texas. Recognize 2017 Pierceville City Council Member, this is this Councilman Ben Briscoe, for your unwary dedication to excellence in local government, your steadfast commitment to improving the City of Pierceville, Texas, and the recognition for your selection as a member of the Texas City Management Association 2018 City Council Year."
Wow. Gee, this wouldn't be possible without great leadership at the top, so I want to acknowledge you, give the staff, and certainly you guys, with great ability here and have such a wide array of citizens, government supporters. We appreciate the paper being here and supporting what we're doing. Anyway, hats off to the leadership at the top of that group of this council.
Councilwoman Aurora Garcia. Your plaque reads the same thing, but we didn't put Ben's name on it. Councilwoman Aurora Garcia. Smile at her. You don't know what he's got. Is that her phone?
No. I don't know, please.
We also have two members that were part of the City Council that was selected that are not currently on the City Council. Now both of them here tonight, and the first one of those is Councilman Monica Martes. I'll say again what Ben said.
You don't remember.
And last but not least, the Punisher, Tommy Lopez Jr. Yeah, wait one second then we'll get him, okay? Okay, so two other things before we move forward. First, the logo or guide that you see on here on the screen, that is actually the design of a street matter that is being produced right now, that will go up over Main Street to recognize the accomplishment. The matter was donated by our city attorney group, the Multivan Law Group, by our city engineers, L&amp;B, and by our city wastewater, or waste management provider, ACI. And so it'll be here about the 25th of March, and it'll go up over Main Street, to let everybody know what you've got. Second, I would ask you take about a 10 or 15 minute recess, so we can, one, get a group picture, and two, break the cake out, so you guys can cut the cake.
This time we'll take a 15 minute recess. I know the council has worked diligently, along with the City Manager, or Mayor, Mary Moore, and the community residents as well, through committees and such, and we certainly welcome the award. We are very proud. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Okay, yes, sir.
Before you go on to the next item, just there was one thing I forgot to mention that comes with this award. I didn't want to detract from smiles, but because you guys won the award, you have to teach a session at a TML conference this year. So we'll start working on that sometime soon.
That'll work. I don't know if you announced the other distinction we got.
Oh, we will, we will.
Okay.
Two more, we asked that three more.
All right, that's great. Okay, we're going to continue on to new business. Item 6A, discussion and possible action regarding a request for city sponsorship for the South Texas Forest Shootout Event utilizing hot funds. This is an action item, so I need a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
Council, we have, before you even pack it, you have an application for hotel occupancy tax funding requests from the Frio County Playbusters. They're here, obviously, so we're filing for the trips, so I'll let them talk to you about what they're requesting.
Evening, council members. My name is Jackson Beaver, and I'm here on behalf of the Frio County Playbusters. Today, I'm joined by my father and also my coach, Adam Beaver, Greg Brown, Madison Brown, Carl Brown, Tommy Allen, and Sherino. First off, I'd like to start off with saying how thankful I am to be on this team, because you get to learn a lot, meet some great people, and you know, it's really just a great place to be whenever you're at this age, controversial age. We do have a shoot coming up, April, and let me give you some history on that. We've been doing this for many years, however, this will be our second shoot, where we have two days instead of just a one day event, so it makes for very sleepless nights. Last year, we had over 300 attendees, and of that, there were 15 overnight hotel rooms utilized, so that was very nice. We do also have some people from the far off cities such as Corpus, White House, Far Texas, and Harlingen. Last year, the City of Pierceville contributed $4,500 to help for clay target expenses, among other things. And this year, we asked for $6,000 to help with expenses for clay targets. We do ask that, but we'll also accept whatever they'll give us regardless of the amount.
Did I hear if you have questions?
Any questions from the council?
I'll just say that one very well spoken, very articulate. You did an outstanding job, Jackson. Those who coached him in presenting that, very well done.
Anything else? Any questions?
Don't look at me for the guy who saw this, they've already coached me into cooking brisket again on my own right now.
This is an action item, so.
Well, I can say too, I was able to go out there last year and saw the people that came to our community, and my kids went through that. It's a very worthwhile event, and I think a good use of our funds. Therefore, I'll make a motion that we approve $6,000 of the Hotel Motel Occupancy Fund to go to the Playbusters.
Second.
It's a motion to approve and second it. All in favor? Okay, next item under new business is 6B. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 2018-0303, approving a request from Immaculate Heart of Mary Catholic Church to use the Palopatino Park for their parish festival to be held on June 9th, 2018, and to waive all fees for their use. The motion to discuss.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any discussion?
Council, do we have anybody here from the church tonight? Oh, you want to speak? I'll let you speak on your application. This is an application we do every year, but if you have something you want to add to it, so please. Do you have a representative here? This is the event that they do every year in June, to sponsor this event for how long?
I have a question. Should we be pretty much done over there with that park?
The demolition started today. The demolition should be done by the end of the month, so demolition part of it definitely. What we're going to do there afterwards, what the council decided to do there afterwards, doubt. That's pretty quick. But what we're, if the council approves this, then we'll just make sure that the crews that are going to come in and put in the pieces work around that skin. We'll make sure that we definitely have a bunch of stuff fished off, broken ground, whatever.
Fished off the area and all that.
Yeah, we'll make sure we have it used.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-0303, granting the parish festival to happen at Palopatino Park, and that we waive all associated fees.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Next on the agenda is Item 6C, Audit Status Update Presented by Robert Carter Senior.
I'm one of the partners for the audit firm. I guess this is a pretty good occasion that you got selected for this honor, being the City Council, that's been selected for this honor, because your staff has been pushing to get you what they call a CAFER, which is going to have a comprehensive annual financial report that's going to be sent to Chicago as part of the Government Finance Officers Association for a certificate in reporting excellence. And I think this will go a long way towards showing the transparency, and also complement what all your efforts that you have done to bring this city more transparency in your financial reporting. This CAFER, what we call it, is not only includes your financial information, it also includes a lot of additional business statistics that go as part of the comprehensive annual report that your staff is working on right now. It's going to be the first time that the city has had such an endeavor and such a report. Right now, the status is that, from the standpoint of the audit, through March tonight, we had completed all the trial balances. There is some additional information we have to get from for debt disclosures, as far as reserves, if any, that are required for the USDA funding, and some confirmations. This week, your staff is working on the additional schedules that are required, over and above the financial schedules, and then by the end of next week, the 23rd, we're looking at getting a completion date, and having that, a report that Brad presented, by the end of the month, and ready for the April meeting. So, things are going along pretty good, your staff is pushing on it. Again, these are quite a lot of additional schedules that will be included, and you need to have a lot of inputting into it, that supplements and augments your financial information, and they're in the process of doing that, and they expect to have that completed, as I understand it, sometime this week or next. And that will give us time to go into it and shoot for the 23rd. Those are our scheduled dates, and so far, if we have any changes or anything, we'll let the city manager know about it, but as far as schedule is, we're shooting for the end of March. Again, this is the first time that's going to be done by the city, and that these, this actually goes hand in hand with the recognition that you got this evening for having increased transparency of your financial stewardship for this city. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but anyway, we just wanted to give you a status report of what that is doing.
Yes, sir.
So if you don't have any questions for Mr. Carter, I just want to follow up on this, so we're clear where we're at. The charter requires that the audit be done by February, which we don't know why it not moved to the end of February, because state law requires it in March. And so, February meeting, what we told you guys was, we're not going to be in the charter deadline, because we're going to have something far more significant than what the charter ever envisioned, and that has to take us to the end of March. It's on timeline to be done. This audit will be so far and above anything that's ever been done here in the City of Pierceville as far as providing the financial transparency he's talking about, that we figured it was well worth that, to stay within the statute right now. It will be a little bit late in reference to the charter, but we figured it was worth it, and that's what we talked to you guys about in February. So it will be done by the end of March. It's very close, just a little more like crazy. You mentioned audit route right now, if you better know, you probably throw some. But it's, this is a whole new, a whole new level. There's not a lot of cities in Texas that complete a CAFER and get recognized for that CAFER. It's a big thing, and this is one of the things I talked to her about when she started, was that the first year, I wanted this, we already get to that point, and that was a lot, lot difficult, and Mr. Carter can tell you that was a lot, lot difficult, but we're going to get it. And so, I just ask for a little bit more patience, but we will have to know for this next quarter.
Well, thank you all for the hard work, we certainly appreciate that.
Amen, and a second, I know this is not an action item, but would it have value that we acknowledge that it's outside the ordinance and just under these circumstances that?
You did that at the February meeting, and we talked about it at the February meeting.
Would that allow us to get some kind of rating from the city, or?
Some kind of.
The rating, you know, the bond rating.
Yes, the bond rating, oh yeah. They'll make, you, right now, when I came, we couldn't get a bond rating when I came here. Two reasons, one, audits work well, audits that have been done, we're only talking about what they've done, but they would not have qualified for bond rating. We did the 2016 Seal Bond fight, one that first started two years ago, which went out to, what was it, 17 companies that won the bill, because we did have a bond rating, we did have a financial statement, so we didn't have any. Once this is done, and we get some reserve built up, and get rated, that obviously we need to do back then, we can go get a rating, you know, make everything a whole launch. So that's the reason we're pushing for the CAFER show quick, because it's that big jumping, it's just to that point where we can start asking for bond ratings, or something that we need to do. Safe citizen.
Sounds like a good deal. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Item 6D, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Creation of an Economic Development Board. This is an action item.
Motion to discuss.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Council, at the last regular meeting, you guys approved the budget amendment which morphed the economic, or the Community Development Director into Community Development, uh, Community and Economic Development Director. And as part of that, what we discussed at that meeting was that, now that that had been done, that budget amendment had been done, the next meeting, we would come back and ask you about creation of the Economic Development Board. This is a board that we're having with that person, so we can start trying to move forward with developing, continue to develop the businesses we have, but also trying to reach out to new businesses and see if we can get some more, more businesses, some more growth here. Before you, the resolution that I asked our city attorney to put together, that just basically memorializes what that board would do, that it would be an advisory board of the council, that you guys will appoint members to it, that they will select their chair and vice chair, that they'll meet monthly, and that they will report back to you through the Planning and Economic Development Board. So we've asked that you approve this resolution, so we can get started with all of that. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, I guess I need to read the resolution.
Go with you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Pierceville, Texas, for the appointment of members to the City of Pierceville Economic Development Board to serve as an advisory board of the City Council. Whereas the City Council of the City of Pierceville, Texas desires to create the City of Pierceville Economic Development Board to serve as an advisory board of the City Council, whereas the City Council desires to appoint members to the City of Pierceville Economic Development Board. Whereas each appointed board member shall serve two-year terms, subject to removal by the City Council pursuant to the Pierceville City Charter. Whereas the Economic Development Board shall elect and designate from its members a chairperson and vice chairperson. Whereas Economic Development Board meetings shall be held monthly. Whereas guidelines, regulations, and responsibilities shall be set forth by ordinance from the City Council. Whereas the Economic Development Board shall serve as an advisory board of the City Council. Whereas the Director of the Planning and Economic Development Department shall serve as Secretary of the Board. Whereas the Secretary of the Board shall be present at all meetings and general private report each month, along with Economic Development Board recommendations to the City Council for possible adoption. Whereas the Economic Development Board shall strive to make recommendations that will increase economic development opportunities within the City of Pierceville. Whereas all provisions outlined in the Pierceville City Charter related to the Board and commissions members shall apply. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Pierceville, that Texas, that one of the above recitations are hereby adopted. Two, the city manager, I should say Section 2 and not 3, so there's one thing we need to change. Section 2, the city manager or his designees are authorized to assist and facilitate the responsibilities of the Economic Development Board in the furtherance of this resolution. And Section 3, should any portion or part of this resolution be held for any reason invalid or unenforceable by court of competent jurisdiction, same shall not be construed to affect any other valid provision hereof, but all valid proportions hereof shall remain in full force and effect. Really pass and approve this 13th day of March, 2008, City of Pierceville.
Thank you, sir. This is an action item, is there a recommendation from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve the creation of the Economic Development Board as requested.
Just a quick question. You said a two-year term?
Yes.
With three? It's a three, three, it's being like all rest.
Every like all rest.
There's a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-0304, and a second. All in favor? Passes unanimous. Okay, next, under new business is 6E, Municipal Court Recognition.
So, second. Feel good started, I don't know if the judge will tell you, you just tell him when to change the slide position.
Okay. Every year, we celebrate the Municipal Court Week, so we put this presentation for y'all. I didn't really want to brag, but Mr. Jackson decided to put us on the agenda. Anyways, so our Municipal Court Week every year is the Texas Municipal Court Education Center puts it out, the early part of November, sometimes mid-November, so this year it ended up being November 16th to 10th. So, this is a 2018, and I'm sorry that I put that in there, but anyway, that's when they set out the awards, not knowing that people were going to get one. One of the purposes is to recognize those who work in local municipalities and have outstanding qualifications to increase traffic safety, preventing impaired riders in their communities. This competition is a friendly way for municipalities to increase their attention to quality of life, new traffic safety activities, best practices will be shared across the state. So, if y'all see there, we did, go ahead, I don't want to take y'all's time and read all of this, there was a couple of things that we needed to do, to go ahead, and I just decided that we were going to go ahead and ensure this, figured, well, we'll go ahead and fill out the application and see where it gets us. So this is, these are pretty much what we needed to do, so, next page. Okay, that's just where we sent it off. Okay, so Pierceville Municipal Court Week, here's the City of Pierceville, we started out our Municipal Court Week with a signed proclamation from our city Mayor, Mary Moore. We then contacted our local paper, the Rio Northwest Current, has set up an ad three weeks prior to the Municipal Court Week to advise the community about our upcoming of the Municipal Court Week. Advising them we would have free educational materials in our court. Those are provided by our Texas TNCEC and TexDOT. We also made arrangements with the Pierceville Intermediate School District, the fourth grade campus during Red Ribbon Week, and scheduled a reading session for the children. We actually scheduled it during the Red Ribbon Weeks, so we could incorporate this with them. If you notice there at your desk, I actually put a book, the book that we read to the children, Snow Monkey Around with Safety in a Car. While the reading was taking place, a little of this paper was invited to take pictures of the event. The Municipal Court staff elaborated with the children of the importance of texting and driving. The children interacted, asking questions, and also shared some of their scenarios that they experienced, their memories pertaining to the book. As y'all know, the children are funny. They will roll their parents under the bus. They told me stories about their dad or their mom, and how they drive, and their drinking, or their texting. So, of course, we told the children, you know, hey, show mom the book, read mom the book, read dad the book, see what they say about that. So they had a really good time, and we had a really good time, and we laughed, of course, with the children. The Municipal Court staff also handed out a zip notebook containing the Constitution of the United States book. We also gave them a little Constitution of the United States, you know, I told them how the importance of this, they, you know, I said, don't throw them away, make sure that you, if you don't want to read them, because you know how kids are, so give it to mommy and daddy, and they'll love to have this. Lastly, throughout the Municipal Court Week, we maintained two displays, one in their municipal court, and the other one at the public library. Mr. Medano was really good to allow us to take one of the tables. We put a whole bunch of free educational materials from TexDOT and the TNCEC, like tear pads, pencils, posters, stickers, bumper stickers, et cetera, a constitution book, and we also gave some of these, this lights are. This is a proclamation that Mayor Moore signed. This was back, as you can see- This was back, as you can see, November sixteenth to tenth. That was three weeks prior to our event. We went ahead and put that on the paper, so that was our ad that we placed. And this is what we, this is a presentation that we set up. This one, of course, this one's at the library. This one's at our office. And all those are, those are, things are all free. We get that from the TMCEC. And there we are, reading to the children. They're all holding up their books. We all gave them those books. We gave them a hoodie bag and the Constitution. And they, they were already in hand, and they had a question, so everybody, all the children were really good at participating next lecture. And then afterwards, after we did that, we turned it in, didn't carry anything back, then all of a sudden, we get this email. So, we were elected as members on the mission.
So, anybody notice anything strange about that list? No, I don't see it. See San Antonio on there? If you look, there's a suburban city from San Antonio close that has the highest budgetary allowances that there are in San Antonio, pretty city. And then somewhere right there is the other city, three cities from southern parts of the state, three. Those are it. And our little video, just for one.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Judge Flores. Thank you for the work with the kids, especially. Anytime we can invest time and efforts into our children of the community, it's well welcomed. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Six F. Update regarding the City of Pearsall Neighborhood Center.
So, just a couple of things real quick, as we've talked, we've been talking about for the last two months. This line, this item is going to be on the agenda for a while. The demolition crews here, they had ordered the fence to put up so that they can get the perimeter secure so they can start the demolition. They, the company that was bringing in the fence, he had a stamp, who couldn't get it here, basically believe they're going to start tomorrow. Spent a significant amount of time talking with the gentleman who's in charge of it. They have come up with a plan for saving our site, so they're pretty confident they're going to be able to make sure that they keep it intact and keep the structural support there up, so we don't... Once they get started, they'll go pretty quick. So, we're, they're still, he's still saying there's no problem, that being done by the end of March of having it taken out. We have, I have a couple of people coming in the next day or two to talk about skate park design, to talk about splash pad design. Still waiting for a date for TML to go down to sit, to walk and sit down, and then make sure that they're... I'm going to use the presentation we had at the last meeting and give that to them of what our proposal was. And once we get their approval, then we'll lock fast. We're kind of hot hole, you know. We get the skate park people here, talk to them, have them design something. Can't do anything after that until we get TML's approval. Same thing with the splash pad, the park, the rest of them. We got some park, park design companies that we talked to as well. We did get notification from the Texas Park Department, ran out of notification from them, that it's okay to change out any different over there. As long as we don't change the boundaries of the park, because that was established, we can change out equipment, any of that stuff. So, we don't recover everything we talked about. With them, we just got to get TML to agree with the knowledge, to one point two million, doing that. And once they do, we should be able to get the plan going through. So, having it done for June, probably not. But making sure that we're not in the middle of some big project over there that shuts down half the park for that time of June, yeah, we'll be able to make sure. So, hopefully we'll have a groundbreaking on what we're going to do over there before then. Maybe have a conceptual design hanging up over there so everybody can see it as part of that June festival this year. And a lot of people get a chance to see what's happening. And then as soon as, as soon as we can get TML to agree, then everything else will be looking forward. And that's all I have on the list.
Sounds good. Any questions from the council? Okay, next item on the agenda is six G. Update regarding the City of Pearsall Main Street Program.
Again, this is another, it's just going to be pretty quick. I just wanted to give you a status on this. As we talked about at the last regular meeting, you guys appointed a board. And we talked about how important it was for them to get rolling really quick because of the timeline that we were given by the Main Street Program. So, we had our first board meeting last Wednesday night. Full board was there. They elected officers, they got their committees and everything set up, everything that needed to be done for the Main Street guidelines. They got everything accomplished the other night. And they've started the work on the May first event. So, the May first event is when we'll have the First Lady of Texas here to show us their rendition of what Main Street could look like and for her to kick off the actual Main Street program. We'll talk a little bit more of the management department's business changes to that. But the committee is, that committee's pretty energetic. They're ready to get to work. We've got, that committee prepared all our other committees, and I keep looking at the date, what it is, because we got Matt the last time I said this. That committee actually has the most grounded group of individuals, I think, community-wise, of any committees we have. We have twenty-year-olds to retired people, I mean, it's everybody in between, and they all bring in different, a different aspect to that committee. I think in that meeting, that's one of the best committees I've been to in a long time. We have school teachers, and they're more bringing kids. They went to the career day at the high school last Friday. She got forty-two volunteers for the first cleanup that they're going to do on Main Street. And that was without going to the groups, the few from the school recommended they go to, that was just at the career day, the kids aside. So, sometime before, that May first visit from the First Lady, they're going to have, we're going to have cleanup on Main Street. We're going to try to redo the trash can, redo all the fires, get those all up and running and nice and cleaned up and looking the way they should look. And then maybe use some of these student committees to help us to maintain those, keep them cleaned up, and keep the plants watered, and everything else as well. They got some ideas to get Main Street looking a whole lot better before she gets, they're rolling with it pretty quick. He's the one that's going to help you fix the plants.
Sounds good. We get it going.
They're rolling along.
I did have a question for you all. In this whole process, is, has anything been mentioned on any type of assistance or grants that we might be able to look at as a city to maybe entice some of the merchants to?
So, outside assistance and grants with the Main Street program, this is what we talked about when we first talked about whether we want to do the application. Like, it takes a little bit before you get there. They have to see a local commitment to it, and they have to see the local people do some work before you actually get to the point where those companies do that. I came from, had a Main Street program in there about their fourth or fifth year before those outside grants became available. There are some other grants out there that you could use on Main Street, and we'll be looking at some of those. But, you know, one of the things we talked about, I think, two years ago in the budget process, we might have mentioned it last year, I don't remember if we did. One of the things we talked about was, was a tax incentive program for the businesses on Main Street where the council was set aside a small, you know, some, some fund, and all the businesses could apply and maybe get up to fifty percent of the cost back for them to redo the basic building or to repair awnings or whatever. So, if they spent five thousand, they could get twenty-five hundred back. So, a local incentive program, that's what the Main Street program wants to see you do, and then that's where you get to those next, those next levels where you actually open up. Yeah, I know you guys saw, because we got, I think we afforded it there, but there was one, there's one national grant, it was years, a half a million dollars. A basket was one of the five finals for that grant issue. They didn't get it. It was the city of Iowa.
That shop was the only Texas city that qualified to get it.
And it was because of where they're at with their costs. But then that, you start to see that those things start popping up, you know. We started up there, and there were some things to fix up, local businesses, do some stuff, and all of a sudden, there was some park money available. And so, the program was able to get a grant to buy a vacant lot into the market. And then after that was the life of that. You notice the Main Street, anything, you see this Main Street, there's a certain life of it, it's those old gas lines. And that's one of the things they want to see you get to pretty quickly, your program is maybe getting those gas lines on Main Street. And they're making money available for those pretty quick. So, there's some things that will come up. It's a very delicate program, though, because you're talking about taking government money, putting it into private property, and that's always a, I don't know. That's why you have to, there are certain ways you could do some small grants. But then you give people like Chevron and some of those, they donate money, that you can go out and programs, it's not going to... And you got to, they got to see a commitment before you get there. That commitment is not hiring a director, getting board, how it would be, it takes order for them to submit approval, but it... There's some stuff along the way, so we'll get there. It's just like everything else, we'll just get there.
How has the community business sector received this?
They're doing good. We can have one donor that, all the business that's saying that as soon as we can start getting the city ready for incentives, that he's wanting to come down and actually go door to door with me, and he's wanting to help and be one of the first ones to get the assistance that Main Street provides, to get the design facade, the facade of design process with them.
And we've got a couple of local businesses that have said that once we get the program up and get going, get going, and they think that they're parent companies would be willing to investigate Main Street too. So, we're here, and it's there, they just want to see a commitment, they just want to see a name, they want to see a commitment. So, we just, we got to get to that point.
Anything by, from the council? Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, six H. Discussion and possible action regarding Melvin Garcia's request for Cinco de Mayo Festival. This is an action item.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Counsel, before you, you have a copy of a request to replace all the city council agenda by Ms. Garcia. She's here.
Thank you, counsel. Congratulations to the regulations group. Angela's opposed, Judge. Well done, well done. We're here again. We're not asking for funds for ourselves. We're asking that the city put on the annual Cinco de Mayo Festival. This would be the third year, and that's how you make a tradition, that's how you keep things rolling. And keeping with the Main Street project, we're asking that it be downtown again. We've had many inquiries regarding the cook-off, vendors, even bands have already called and asked, are we going to do this? When can we know? So, we've got people on hold. We're here to facilitate, the city, whatever, whatever you need us to do, we're more than happy to assist. I think Cleo has the numbers from last year. Who is she here?
She has Siao.
Oh, you've got the numbers, okay. Do you mind giving them a rundown? This is post. Post, if you would like.
So, their recap that they provided said that on Saturday, the attendance was seventeen hundred. On Sunday, the attendance was two thousand. That came from numbers that Garcia's provided at the gate. They provided information, said there was people from Uvalde, Laredo, San Antonio, Houston, Arizona, and as far away as Florida. But they estimated twenty-four hotel rooms, six at the Baymont, four at the Holiday Inn, four at Days Inn, two at Garden Inn and Suites, four at the Royal Inn, and two at Southern Inn. And I, I guess there were some coupons for, for six hotels that participated, but they tracked those. There was twelve dinners. That's what I have on this.
And I think there was one hotel that didn't, wasn't sure. Was it the downtown hotel?
The Pearsall Inn Suites, could have given an exact number.
He said he had it, he had an influx of ten estates, but he said, I couldn't, I couldn't, you know, tell me that was because of the festival. That was his, uh...
That was four of them.
We've discussed this with the security, with the city PD, and with the sheriff's department. The servants are also asking to be a part again. This is one of their biggest fundraisers of the, of the year. We've got anything else that might come up, we're, as I was saying, we're here to facilitate, to make things run smooth. People look forward to this. It's a, it's a big bet. And I think the numbers need to be discussed.
Have a look at that, we get it?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Do we have, so, I don't see a proposal.
We don't see a proposal.
What, what is the request?
The request is, the request is that we sit through the head, we're willing to help. Facilitate, you know, et cetera, just like last year, we, we don't throw the event ourselves. We assist at the entire event planning process.
Yeah, and was there, was there a amount? I'm sorry.
There was. No, I believe the amount was about forty thousand for a two-day event.
And is, is there, should there be an application or a packet?
Well, if it was a city-sponsored event, no. And I think that's what they're asking, is that the city, is it a city-sponsored event?
They're just asking that the city sponsor the event at that location, which has been held the last couple of years, I believe. And I think at this point, you know, if it's a city-sponsored event, I don't know how the council feels, but I'd like to see what we, else we could do in terms of exploring other venues as well. We have the Lions Club now. We have other places that we could possibly utilize as well. It's a, what do you all think?
I'm all in favor of the event. I know those things are valuable, but I'd kind of like to see what we're getting for that, where the, where the cash flowed, where, you know... As I recall, too, we had City Hands that were setting up electrical lines and, and various other things, and I understand we did that, but... What are we getting for the forty thousand? And what, you know, where does the gigling go? Who pays for the beer? Who pays for the bands? What, you know, where's that?
Well, the city, the city pays for everything, except for now the beer, of course. But the city pays for the, all the stuff. And there happened, there was some in-kind services that were in the form of, I think, the generators were...
The vendors were in-kind from Garcia's. We in-kind all twelve vendors. I can't remember.
The pay-per-view fight, you guys paid for the fight.
We, the, the match was in-kind by Garcia's.
And there's going to be a boxing event this year also. And then the way, I, I would, I would, I would measure it, I guess, by the attendance. By the attendance that came through the door, I guess that's how you would measure it, but that's one of the way to measure it. Another way to measure it is by hotel rooms.
So, who, who keeps that? Who, I guess that's my question. You know, we've got thirty, seven hundred, four thousand people that are coming in. There's a, there's a gate, and they pay to come in.
They don't pay to go in.
It was a free event.
It was free, okay.
Yes, it was a free event.
The reason that there's a headcount is because as they were coming through the gate, they were expected to keep a headcount, to have a headcount for the post analysis to record.
So, it's not, it's really, really, there's no revenue that comes in, anyway?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
The recognition of the city. And it's out downtown, where, you know, we're starting with the Main Street program, it's a event that's, you know, downtown, right off of Main Street. You know, you're going to drive through Main Street to see the event.
And there's a, there's a reason why a lot of towns have events downtown, it's because it brings the community together, they feel a part of something. Versus, you know, having it, you know, way off, a couple of miles out of town somewhere. It's, it's, and there's a different flavor to it.
And who provides the beer cells?
We do. We have to go to TDC, we ask for extended premises and for a special, it's a special license. You've got to be licensed to get, to be able to sell the beer.
So, then, all the beer that you were providing, you're making the profit off of that?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may ask, what role did, I'm sorry, what role did the city play last year in the event?
They played it.
For a dollar now?
Forty thousand.
Last year was also forty thousand?
Yeah. And what were the numbers for the, what else have you done with the, with the campaign? What else has been done with the planning?
As far as, you're trying to question?
Did you like work?
Yeah. Training days, sports.
Training days, uh, sports, uh, play busters, uh, Christmas.
Christmas is gonna stay out of our funding. Um, I think that was that last year. This event, this event, primary days, the play buster shoot, Christmas.
Yeah.
Fourth of July is a common...
Mr. Jackson, have you had, have you all had time here at the city to plan an event, look at an event?
Well, no, we haven't. I mean, we've been busy with, between audit and the neighborhood center and all that stuff, we haven't really looked at anything yet. Um, you know, you mentioned possible other venues, the Lions Club being one, or the Civic Center, which is now the Civic Center. Of course, the inside's being renovated, that will be finished right before the Fourth of July, but the outside, um, is available, and it's, you know, it's a completely enclosed environment, controlled apartment. Um, the park may or may not be, you know, that would be one more thing with, Petino Park would be, may or, may or may not be usable. Uh, that's one more area we would have to, have to work on securing. Uh, of course, securing that area over there is paid for out of funds, there is a fence, but up it is paid for out of funds, too. Well, after, when we did the Fourth of July last year, that was, we, the city did that event, um, we bid out the beer sales for that event. We, uh, we bid out everything for that event. Um, that was, that was fair, I would say, because everybody had the opportunity to come in, and I don't remember what, what we probably, they had to give us twenty-five percent of the money. Um, that's the only other event that had alcohol sales, because it's alcohol, Christmas. Um, I won't back those. Those, I feel like, I think they're really comparable.
What was the turnout with the Fourth of July? I mean, I forgot about that.
I don't remember what to count on.
And what did the, the city spend on the Fourth of July?
Uh, about, what was spent, less than ten thousand dollars out of city funds.
Less than two thousand?
The city, because people sponsored it, the county was sponsoring it, so no.
Do we...
Their color company's this one.
It was a one-day event?
Um, it was a single mile event, yes.
Do we, and we put a fence there, was there a fence?
Yeah, we, we have to put a temporary fence, it'll have to be a temporary fence for the ABC program.
Yeah.
The ABC program.
Yeah. Peter?
Yes, sir.
What, what about, what about security? What about those related issues for, is that, is that a good venue for a single mile? Is it better?
Uh, any venue that, that we're alcohol's gonna be involved, there's always gonna be a, there's always a possibility. Uh, and a couple of years ago, we had, we had a, a rough time. Last year, we, it went very smooth. It just depends on, on, on being vigilant and having presence there. You know, we're, we're available to, to, to work any event that you guys would like to have. I mean, we'll, we'll get it done, we'll handle it, one way or another.
It seems like there's quite a few details to work out at this point, so I'm gonna move every table aside at this point.
Well, I would, I mean, be amenable to that, but why don't we stipulate what we need to, what we need to hear? What, what, what we need to see as far as...
Plan for the city, because the city's gonna sponsor it.
Would it be beneficial, we set up like a committee, or a committee, a single mile committee, or...
That's your choice. That's entirely...
To, to look at all, every, every aspect of, of the festival.
It's, it's not a whole lot different than what we've done in the past. It's, um, getting, getting the city to go, to go along with it is one number one. Uh, the security is something else, and that's been, that's been discussed. The vendors, we usually pay for the, for the vendor setup, that was something out of their pocket. That's how we, um, we kinda give back to the event. Uh, last year, I think, six hundred dollars that we paid for, um, for the vendors. Uh, and it's first come, first served. That way, they don't have to, if they, if they set up and, you know, their, their profit doesn't have to be affected by the, by the fee for setting up the, their, their shop. And, and it, I think that it's, uh, it exposes their product, and it in different ways.
It, it is a worthwhile event, and, and I, I agree with a lot of the things that are being said. However, the details of it need to be worked out with the city.
Definitely.
Because, uh, the city has not had pla, uh, time to plan for this. So I'm gonna recommend that we get together with the city and see what, uh, recommendations you can make towards this event, and then, in the meantime, I'm gonna move every table.
While I see your point, we are already, what, March thirteenth? We only have maybe a month and a half left. Or is that seriously enough time for us to plan a single mile event?
Long time faster.
We've done it the last two years.
It was tabled, and they got approved in March, and it was not enough time. I mean, of, of course, they got pulled off, but it's, it honestly is not enough time to, you know, to book your vendors, to guarantee them, even now, if it's not our time.
Well, and, and, you know, but another thing, we're not gonna remove it with the wheel, that's for sure. We've got a template of what, you know, needs to be done, and, uh, I think, I think we can do it.
And, and I, I think you can do it as well, but the city is sponsoring it, and the city has not had time to work out any kind of details with anyone, uh, at this point.
You know, I, I seem to recall that this is kind of a topic of discussion every time we do this.
Every time, every time.
Why don't you guys come next year in January, you know, and, and...
Well, I, I was under the impression that the city was gonna bring it up, like a, like a rotating event, like an annual event. But I guess you don't have any grasp of that yet.
Well, there's a lot of things we have grasped, but, but anyway, that's just a thought, maybe, come next January, you know, and, and give us time to think about it. It, it is a city-sponsored event, and obviously, you know, if we do get a committee, you'd be a great person to serve on that, kinda get things moving and, and in the right direction. I do understand what it takes to put these on, and I know time is of the essence, and the problem isn't that. So I, so I can appreciate that comment from, from your perspective. But two, uh, I'd like to know a little bit more about what we're gonna do, and teach with you and your staff, how you guys are gonna pull all this off, so, um, um, I don't know, when, when do we, when do we meet again? Don't we meet again in a week?
Weeks from today.
Weeks from today?
So we're in that next session here.
Can we, can we...
Are we putting anything on the, yeah, we can, we can add on this, uh, dinner, sure.
So, to be amenable, why don't, why don't we table it until then, and then you guys get everything together that we need, and teach you, get what you need with the staff, and then make a presentation so that we know what, what it is that we're gonna be specifically voting on the dollar value, and then, you know, really, next year, January, discuss.
Next year in January, y'all put it on their agenda, please.
Well, I'm not gonna, you know...
You don't, you're not interested? Okay, I get it.
Yeah, it, it, I would, I would, like, see you put it on, or you...
So what, what is it that y'all want us to do in these two weeks? Can we get the team? I know that they're still, like, extremely busy. Do we start getting some things together?
No, because the city sponsors the city, it's something else.
The, the city, yeah.
Well, that's, but we always assist it.
Right, but there's no, there's no approved budget right now, so that means we can't be talking to bands, we can get it...
No, 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 we can give you an idea.
Sure, sure.
No, I'm not gonna go inside any contracts or anything with bands, no, absolutely not. I just wanna know what do you think, what is to do within these two weeks? Do we get together, team?
We'll, we'll try to get together on Thursday. We have all those contractors coming, the bar office skate park, and the splash pad on Thursday, I think we should have some, we'll, we'll get on, I'll get on.
Yeah, I think that's a, a good plan.
It's a start, so...
And it is, it is a good thing. It is a good thing. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table this in the next...
All right, motion to table is on the table. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. All in favor? It will be tabled until further notice? I believe there's no items for executive session, so we'll move on to the manager's report.
Uh, council members, a few items that I want to bring up tonight in the management report. First, the Community and Economic Development Department. We have completed the hiring process for the Community and Economic Development Department Director position, previously approved by the City Council of Austin, Ohio State. You all have already met, Community Director, he's not formally introduced to the City Council meeting, so Mr. Uche Echiozo, who is sitting right behind me, officially began in the position last Friday. Of course, you guys saw him at the planning meeting we had last week. Mr. Echiozo has a double master's degree and some great experience in community planning. Uh, he'll be an important part of our comprehensive planning process. In his few short days here at the city, he's already visited many parts of the city to look at and see what he thinks you can do to approve, and offer some good ideas for improvement, so we're looking forward to what he's gonna bring to the state of personal. So welcome, Uche. Uh, the first lady of Texas visit, I kinda briefed, uh, broached this a little bit tonight, but I wanna make sure we get it all wrapped up. As previously discussed, the first lady of the state of Texas will be at Pierce Hall for an official kickoff for our Main Street program on May first, twenty eighteen. We were notified last week that the timing will be changed, uh, from a morning presentation to an afternoon presentation. Uh, the actual ceremonies themselves will be open to the public, and will occur right outside of City Hall on this side, outside Market Street. Uh, we'll provide some more details as we receive them. The event should provide some very positive exposure for the city of Pierce Hall, so keep that in the open on your calendar, especially the afternoon, because we can try and get the full city council up there for this as well. Uh, the Neighborhood Center replacement plan, again, wrapping everything up, city staff will be meeting with TML representatives either late this week or early next week to discuss the approved Neighborhood Center replacement plan for the council, that the council adopted earlier this month, while we are waiting. For that meeting, we're already working with potential contractors to develop plans for the skate parks, splash paddock recreational components, uh, the proposed renovations of Petino Park. We're at a point where we really need TML's approval for this alternate plan before we invest a lot more time organizing what you guys talked about, so, I mean, we've got the wheel turning, we need to have them say yes, and then we'll be able to start turning this up a lot faster. Uh, the city of Pierce Hall convention, the Civic Center renovation, the renovation project at the convention, the Civic Center is moving along very quickly. Demolition has been completed on the internal, on the inside of the, the building itself, and the construction has begun on the batteries and walls. Daily, it looks like a whole different building out there, so it's, it's moving along nicely, should not have any problems getting it done by when it's supposed to be done. The new city website, work on the new city website as progressive as scheduled. The design or the look of the website has been completed, and we're now working on building the department pages. Uh, don't forget afterwards, fixtures, when you guys leave. Um, the, the actual design itself, we sent out them last Friday, I think it was, last Thursday or Friday, and for, and for the last design, it looks really, really, really nice. Um, have changing out pictures for the title line, all the pictures are, are local pictures. We, I think it's the G4 Ranch gave us a picture of whitetail deer, there's just a gorgeous picture of a deer, we got a picture of the water tower, the town, and some other stuff. It'll look so much better than what it looked like before. Uh, we're building the department pages now, so when they migrate them over, it'll, it'll migrate a bit easier, but we, that thing should be ready to go by May first. When it goes, also, we'll have the online payment, should be part of it. Uh, we'll have the searchable ordinances, so anybody can just get online and search ordinances, white hens, which has been something that's been fun for the last few years, it'll be easy now. Gas line replacement project, the phase three of that project, we talked about this at the last meeting, we had the bid opening for phase three, uh, last Thursday. We had two companies that bid on the project, and the bids were significantly higher than what we expected. Uh, so we're trying to negotiate with the winning bidder right now to get them to draw a significant amount on that, in what they requested. I don't think that'll happen, which we will probably go off of it again, and see if we can get some more companies to bid on it, on the second level. Number three, Peter, where are you? I hear you. Safe City Award, this is the third, feel good story tonight. The city of Pierce Hall was ranked sixty-third out of three thousand-plus cities in the state of Texas for safe living conditions in a survey published by the National Council for Home Safety and Security. This is by far the highest ranking for any city in this part of South Texas. Uh, without the hard work of our Pierce Hall Police Department and assistance from all the citizens in town, this would not have been possible, so congratulations to everyone. Uh, boards and commissions, we just approved another board, but we still have other boards that need members, too. Uh, so the city still has numerous vacancies on a number of boards and commissions that will need to be filled. Anyone interested can stop by City Hall and pick up an application. Uh, obviously, we're gonna be pushing for signups for the Economic Development Board now as well, because we need to get that, uh, filled up and going. So we'll, we'll see if we can get it filled up, but we still have open means on tourism, we still have open means on... Youth advisory?
School, parks.
So parks and recs, youth advisory.
Library.
Library. I think that's the fourth, we still have open means on, and we're trying to get active, so. Uh, tourism board's about half full, uh, youth advisory, I think we've only had two signups so far, um, so we need to push to get some more members signed up. No, no, that's gonna be too early. Um, okay, so for, for the last item I have on the, on my manager's report, I wanna get my soapbox, because I, I've done this before. I'll get my soapbox built in. Two years ago yesterday, I walked into the, walked into the doors of this building to attempt to help right a ship. I told the council, the employees, and the citizens that we couldn't fix this city overnight, but that if everyone stayed focused, we would see continual improvement, and eventually we would get there. It is a lot easier to break something than it is to fix it. Those promises of improvement require a few things. They require the council doing their job transparently and without concern for personal gain. They require staff working harder with less. They require patience and dedication from everyone. Tonight's meeting should prove, should provide even those that choose not to see the proof that this city is not what it was two years ago. It's something significantly better, and a city that can be proud of. Tonight, we announce and recognize the Pierce Hall City Council as the twenty-eighteen TCMA City Council of the Year for the entire state of Texas, something that has never happened before. Tonight, we discuss Pierce Hall's appearance on the list of the safest cities to live in across Texas, something that nobody probably would have ever imagined. Tonight, we discuss our municipal court being recognized for their efforts to reach our youth and educate them, again, something that wouldn't have even been a wish two years ago. Tonight, we discuss the, the pending completion of our fiscal year audit with a comprehensive annual financial report that will be submitted for possible recognition by the Government Finance Officers Association, the hardest and most transparent audit there is to complete. Again, something that cannot have been imagined when you consider the basic annual audits required by the charter were not even being completed before that. These accomplishments do not mean we are finished, because we all know we're only beginning to see the possibilities in this great city. However, tonight, we need to celebrate the victories that we have discussed at this meeting. Celebrate the fact that people and organizations outside of Pierce Hall are recognizing the work that is being done here. Celebrate the fact that all those efforts each of you made are paying off. Celebrate the fact that in spite of all the false rhetoric, misinformation, and flat-out lies that are being spread around about what this council and what this city are doing, that small group of disruptive instigators could have never accomplished in a lifetime what you all have in two years. Done.
Thank you very much, sir. Review, uh, bills, uh, we need to review bills that have been paid. Anybody have questions, or do you have a report or anything? Any questions on the bills? Hey, this, this is something that, we just reviewed the bills, we do not approve or anything, it's already been... Yes, sir.
Kind of related, that, the hot tax audit, you asked.
Um, three contractors I talked to, the council authorized me to negotiate with contractors and select one. Talked to three, there's one by far everybody recommends, um, and they're in the process of sending us a contract, and actually, what they do is they go back, they go do a bunch of pre-work before they even offer a contract, and look and see if it's even worth us bringing them in to do it. Uh, and then, once they get that done, they send us a contract that says, you need to look at these hotels, and this is what will, will be charged. Uh, so we're expecting that contract any day, so if we get the contract, we'll report.
End timeframe?
He said quick. He said quick once a week. I mean, it sounds to me like they do all the work for the hotels, so it'll be fast.
So by sometime in May, you think we'll have...
I would say, I would say in the May, absolutely.
Any other questions on the bills, or any related item to the bills? Okay. Next on the agenda is general announcements. Do you have any general announcements?
Once they have, two weeks from tonight, the first annexation date.
That's on the Tuesday, then the second one is on Thursday.
That's, that's same Thursday, so two weeks from tonight, and two weeks from this Thursday, we'll do it two years.
March twenty-seventh and the twenty-ninth.
You'll have the, will we be able to review that pre-meeting? Will we be able to review that pre-meeting? The annexation process?
Yeah.